I call this the March 16th, 2021 Meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to Order. Our invocation tonight will be given by Elder Tony Knott. Tony is a member of the West End Cumberland Presbyterian Church. And our pledge tonight will be given by Roderick Tay Fox. He's a senior at Fayetteville High School. He's a member of the Fayetteville Tigers, who were the state champions this year. He's a treasurer of the Beta Club, National Honor Society, FPU Student Board, former member of the Chamber Board, and he's a former Tiger Band Member. He's a member of St. Paul AME Church, where he's active in the Youth Department and the Youth Choir. He's an avid drummer. He says he's quiet and loves sports, but I know he loves sports, then we'll find out if he's quiet or not. But we thank y'all for coming tonight to serve as our invocation and pledge. If y'all would come to the podium at this time and would please stand for the invocation or remain standing for the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been tasked with giving the invocation this evening, and I'm very honored to be able to do so. Let's go to our Lord and Savior in prayer. In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth. We want to thank you, Heavenly Father, for all the things you've done for us, Heavenly Father. Thank you for your so many blessings, Lord. Thank you for keeping us, Heavenly Father. Thank you for loving us. Heavenly Father, we just ask tonight that you come into the midst, Heavenly Father, and be here with us. Be with our leaders, Heavenly Father. Help us, lead us, and guide us, Lord. Keep us on the straight and narrow, Heavenly Father. And we just want to thank you for all that you've done. These things we say and ask in your precious Son, Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Thank you, Brother Knott, and thank you, Tay. At this time, if you haven't answered roll call, please answer on your computer.
Are you trying to get somebody present in that? I have Ms. Shirley marked. Are you looking for her? I've got her marked. I have 21 commissioners present, three absent.
Okay. Announcement. One is, when we have a voice vote or a... Please don't enter anything on your computer, so... Because that'll mess us up in how we tabulate those. So the only other announcement, I'm thinking that prior to the April budget meeting, we may have a work session related to this year's budget. So mark your calendars for that, an hour before that April budget meeting. We'll try to do that at 5:00 prior to the 6:00 budget meeting. I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the March 2nd meeting, which was a rescheduled February commission meeting that was regularly scheduled on the 16th of February, but delayed because of the weather that week. Commissioner Bradford makes that motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Revis seconds it. Any questions, comments on those minutes? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. You should have received 10 monthly committee meeting minutes in there. Entertain a motion acknowledging the reception of those. Commissioner Hunter makes a motion. Commissioner Spray seconds. Any questions on any of those? All in favor of acknowledgement, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Next item, resolution of respect for the late James Lloyd Ellis. Our county attorney, Ed Sims.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution honoring the memory of the late James Lloyd Ellis, whereas on January 31, 2021, the many friends and associates of James Lloyd Ellis were saddened to learn of his death at the age of 84. And whereas James Lloyd Ellis, better known as Coach Ellis and Coach Jimmy, was born on February 22, 1936, in Petersburg, Tennessee, the son of the late Edward C. and Winika Barnes Ellis. And whereas he was a graduate of Petersburg Elementary and High School and went on to complete his education degree at Middle Tennessee State College. And whereas he began his teaching and coaching career at Huntland High School in 1958. From there, went to Petersburg High School, where he was the principal, teacher, athletic director, and coach of the football team and boys' and girls' basketball teams. And whereas, when he left Petersburg, Coach Ellis went to Central High School, where he coached the girls' basketball, football, and track teams. And whereas, Coach Ellis retired from the Lincoln County School System in 1996 as assistant principal and athletic director. And whereas, Coach Ellis was inducted into the TWSAA Hall of Fame in 2004. Whereas, he was a member of the Army ROTC, a former Lincoln County Commissioner, served as an elder of the Mimosa Church of Christ, and attended the Howell Church of Christ. And whereas, he is survived by his wife, Fay Moon McKinney Ellis, children, Wyann King and husband Dwight, Melody, Di, and husband Britt, Jamie Kane and husband John, Jerry McKinney and wife Linda, John T. McKinney and Nancy Cox and husband JB, grandchildren Bonnie with spouse Charles Colwell, Kristin Carter and husband Rob, Jim Di, husband Christine, Kim Di and husband Heath Slaton, Sarah McCormick and husband Adam, Bob Kane and husband Whitley, wife Whitley, Chris Kane and wife Caroline, Matthew McKinney, Mark McKinney and wife Andrea, Ben Cox and Julia Cox, great-grandchildren Bruce Carter, Sophie Carter, Hannah Colwell, Eliza McCormick, Nora McCormick, Oliver Kane, Weston Kane, Caleb Di, and Emma Grace Di. And whereas, in addition to his parents, Jimmy was preceded in death by his first wife, Fred Namay Russell Ellis, in 2012, and brothers Bill Ellis and Maurice Ellis. Now therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Lincoln County Commission, do hope our wish and desire to express to the family of Mr. Ellis our sincere condolences and sympathy, and to express to them, as well as his many friends and associates, our sincere appreciation for the many years of devoted and distinguished service rendered to Lincoln County and this community by Mr. Ellis. And be it further resolved that this resolution of respect and esteem be spread upon the minutes of the commission, and that a copy thereof be forwarded to his wife and children. This the 16th day of March, 2021. Signed, William R. Newman, County Mayor, Phyllis F. Countz, County Clerk.
What's the will of the commission on this resolution of respect? Commissioner Mitchell makes a motion. Commissioner Young seconds it. Any discussions? All those in favor of this, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Would you present that to the family? I think we have a copy for each of the children and Ms. Ellis. Thank you, family, and thank y'all for allowing Lincoln County to have Coach Ellis to serve us the way he did for the number of years. We sure appreciate it. At this time, we'll get an update on our TCAT project here at the Lincoln Central Academy. Dr. Laura Monks, our TCAT Director.
Well, good evening. Thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity to bring this update, and thank you to our commissioners. If you remember last month, I was here and gave just a brief update of where we were with our project in moving our campus here to the building that we're in here tonight. If you would, I am going to read. I hate reading through you, but this is the only way I can make sure I get it all straight. There is a timeline, I think, that will help all of you understand sort of where we have been and where we're going. So June of 2020, Lincoln County was awarded a $30,000 USDA Rule Development Grant to fund the installation of an electrical upgrade for a TCAT Shebbyville Industrial Maintenance Automation Program, and to provide wireless access points to the portion of the building being used by TCAT Shebbyville. That's here at Lincoln Central Academy. $28,000 of that $30,000 was designated for the electrical infrastructure upgrade. $2,000 of the $30,000 was designated for the wireless access points. The USDA grant also required a 20% match, or $7,500. The county commission voted to provide $2,000 cash match. TCAT Shebbyville initially agreed to provide $5,500 in labor, thinking that the project could be handled by our trained faculty members. The wireless access point project was completed in August of 2020 with the grant funding, the cost of the wireless access points of $2,000, and TCAT Shebbyville matching the cost with $500 of labor to install these wireless access points. For the electrical infrastructure upgrades, the county sought bids because the cost of the project would exceed $10,000. After bids were received, it was evident that an electrical engineer and the state fire marshal should be brought in. The county contacted Gary Cromer, an electrical engineer and a firm the county had used before. This happened in November of 2020. We requested, the county requested, a professional estimate of the cost of the project and to provide the electrical plans for the project. In January 2021, the county received a letter from Mr. Cromer stating that his professional cost estimate of the project would be approximately $50,000, and this would include his fee of $10,000 for the electrical plans, overseeing the bid process, and visiting the project site one time during the installation. Since the estimated cost of the project, $50,000, would exceed the grant funds of $28,000, TCAT Shebbyville has submitted a letter to the mayor stating that TCAT Shebbyville would monetarily cover the cost of the project estimated to be $22,000. So this was 28, he estimated it would be 50. We have agreed to $22,000. And I've told the mayor and told Vicky that if, for some reason, it comes back more than that, we'll cover that part. But right now, he's estimating around $50,000. The next step is to have Gary Cromer's company, or business, complete the electrical plans, then have the electrical plans approved by USDA. And this is a requirement of the grant. So once we get the bid plans, they'll have to go to USDA for their approval before we can go on with the work. And so we, see, we'll work with the mayor's office to award a bid based on the project requirements. Once the bid is awarded, the work will occur and will be supervised by Mr. Cromer or his designee. So that's my update, Mayor. Did you have any questions, or anyone else have any questions?
Anybody got questions? I think that really, the timeline and the monies, that I think everybody's got any questions on that.
And I'm going to provide this to Ms. Vicky. She asked me to do this about two weeks ago, and I failed to do that. So she'll have a copy of the timeline.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is consideration for approval of a resolution in support of adding Lincoln County to the Appalachian Regional Commission. Ed?
Okay, the resolution reads, whereas the Appalachian Regional Commission, the ARC, is an economic development partnership agency of the federal government and 13 state governments focusing on 420 counties across the Appalachian region. And whereas, ARC's mission is to innovate, partner, and invest to build community capacity and strengthen growth in Appalachia. And whereas, ARC invests in Appalachia's economic future by providing grants, publishing research, and sponsoring learning experiences, all to help the region's communities seize their opportunities, address economic disparity, and advance prosperity. And whereas, it would be beneficial for Lincoln County to be added to the counties in the ARC in order to open doors for much-needed resources and development to flow into our community and increase grant funding and opportunities. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Lincoln County, Tennessee, that it hereby request that Lincoln County become a member of the ARC, believing it will benefit our local citizens and the economy of Lincoln County and the state of Tennessee. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to U.S. Senator Bill Hagerty, U.S. Senator Marsha Blackburn, and U.S. Congressman Dejarle. Passed and adopted by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lincoln, State of Tennessee, this 16th day of March, 2021, and approved by the mayor and the county clerk.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Bradford makes a motion of approval. Seconded by Commissioner Revis. We tried this a few years ago and got turned down. And basically, Commissioner Ewing asked the question, does it cost anything? It does not cost us anything. It makes us, where we can apply for some grants that we would not be able to otherwise. But the biggest thing is, on a lot of grants, our match would be less if you're in the Appalachian Regional Commission. So there's not any disadvantages, but I don't want to get your hopes up too much that we'll get it this time either. But we won't get it if we don't try, so that's what we're attempting again. Any questions? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. We got four items next that are appointments. I will read each of those. Is there any objection to taking all four of those under one vote? Okay. Do I have a second, taking them all under one vote? Okay, Commissioner Hunter makes a second. All in favor of taking them as one group, all four, please say aye. Any opposed? Unanimously approved. Okay. Number one, consideration for approval to elect Josh Blackburn to the Library Board to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Anita Johnson. Term expires June 2021. Is Josh here? Okay. Number two, consideration for approval to appoint Andrea Delap to the Buffalo River Regional Board to fill a vacancy created by Sandy Bradford's resignation. That term would expire June of 2022. Is Andrea here? Okay. Consideration for approval to appoint Rachel Muzarelli to the Buffalo River Regional Board to fill a vacancy created by Vicky Hamilton's resignation. That term would also expire June 2022. Is Rachel here? Okay. I know the next one's here. Consideration for approval to appoint Ms. Agnes Marie Barnes to the Lincoln County Ethics Committee to fill the vacancy created by the death of Ron May Hall. That term would expire September 2021. Ms. Agnes Marie Barnes, would you please stand up? This is one of my favorite people in the world. Thank you for agreeing to serve on this. And she is Dora Barnes' mother-in-law. And she visits us every once in a while, and most of the time, she brings something to eat because she's one of the better cooks in Lincoln County, too. What's the will of the commission on these four appointments? Commissioner Revis makes a motion. Commissioner Bradford seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Thank you, commission. The next, Doug Campbell, our EMA Director.
Good evening. First thing I want to do is just say a big thank you to this group. On behalf of the Health Department, y'all approved some money to put them in that exhibit building down there for the vaccination site. And I think, from what I understand, by far, we have one of the best vaccination sites in this area down here. And speaking to the Health Department and some of the other EMA Directors around, our side is far superior because of your efforts and the money you spent. So I know from the ladies down there, a big thank you goes out to this body for voting to do that. The main thing I have before you tonight is, our Fire EMA Committee approved to receive money from one of our stations, Park City in this case, to buy some radios. This is at no cost to the county. We simply just receive the money in, put it into our budget, and then we buy the radios out of the county. I failed to put it on the Budget Committee agenda for this month, and I'm just asking you to go ahead and approve this tonight so that we can get these radios ordered for our station. Any questions?
Motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of this item, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item was the Patrick Wellness Center. I put that on there in case I had an update. I do not have an update unless somebody out of the health system wants to update on anything. Seeing none, I guess we're ready for our library report. Cherie Jax, who is a board member, is going to give our report tonight. Thank you.
We had 1,174 visitors that came to the library last month, so our circulation numbers are steadily moving up. The library is open for normal operations to everyone wanting to browse and use our computers. We do close daily from 12 to 1:00 p.m. every day for sanitation of surfaces. The use of hand sanitizer is preferred upon entering the library and is readily available in various areas. Wearing of masks and social distancing is encouraged. We are still quarantining materials for 24 hours before shelving. The programs that we had offered virtually and in person for adults, children, and teens are the Korean Jewels Club and the Elk River Book Club. We are continuing to offer programs online for the safety of everyone. The Elk River Book Club is the only program that we have that is meeting physically. We are having a wonderful turnout for the Korean Club held every week. But the Anime Club is on hiatus for the time being. We are hoping to add more in the near future. There has been an uptick in questions being asked online through Facebook and our online forum on our website. The staff is working above and beyond, making sure everyone stays safe. We are hopeful that a new director will be in place soon.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Jax? Thank you, Cherie. Next item, Budget Committee. Commissioner Ogil.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say before we start, if I missed somebody that was at the last budget meeting, didn't get your name in here, I apologize for that. We had a lot of visitors that night, and it was kind of hard to be sure we got everybody. I think Vicky and Dana did a good job of getting who all we did get. But if I missed somebody, I apologize upfront. Budget Committee meeting report for the March 16th, 2021 Regular Session of Board of Commissioners. The Budget Committee of the County Legislative Body of Lincoln County, Tennessee, met pursuant to due notice in the library at Lincoln Central Academy on March 2nd, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. Members present were Shirley Dangerfield, Steve Graham, Grady Davis, Randy Bradford, Donnie Ogil, Kate Ewing, Ricky Bryant, and Doug Cunningham. Others present were County Mayor Bill Newman, Deputy Finance Director Vicky Trentum, County Attorney Ed Sims, Finance Department Tracy Kendall, Dana Gentry, Jackie Pamplin, Lois Clemmons, and Lisa Seuss. Commissioners Mark Mitchell, Commissioner John Thorpe, Commissioner Ronald Jean, Commissioner David Sanders, Commissioner Steve Spray, Commissioner Tori Young, Commissioner Stephanie Britt, Commissioner Pat Haynes, Commissioner Danny Walker. School Board members, Dr. Jimmy Daniel, Sheriff Murray Blackwelder, Chief Deputy Joyce McConnell, Chief Deputy Jeff Bradford, Secretary Bookkeeper Sandy Medcalf, Fire EMA Director Doug Campbell, Health System CEO Darrell Blalock, Health System CFO Bob Lannis, and Industrial Development Board Executive Director Elaine Milton and various members of the community. Item one, nomination of Vicky Trentum Recording Secretary. We had a motion by Commissioner Ogil, seconded by Commissioner Dangerfield, and passed unanimously to approve Vicky Trentum as Recording Secretary.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Bradford makes a motion. Commissioner Holland seconds. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogil?
Item two, Mayor Newman recognized the Health System CEO Darrell Blalock to speak on the closing of the Patrick Wellness Center. Mr. Blalock briefed the members of the committee on the status of the Patrick Wellness Center and its financial reason for closing. After detailed discussion about the cost, upkeep, and maintenance by members of the committee, Chairman Graham requested detailed analysis on operation for the hospital by providing income statements and balance sheets for every department, not only the wellness part. Mr. Blalock said that they would have this information to the Budget Committee within 30 days from the March 2nd, 2021 meeting. Commissioner Bryant requested to see a plan for repair services to include quotes for those costs. We had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Dangerfield, and passed unanimously to evaluate information on financials once provided to the Budget Committee. The Budget Committee will review, make a recommendation to the legislative body. Until then, the Patrick Wellness Center will remain open until June 30, 2021.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Mr. Mitchell makes a motion of approval. Commissioner Ewing seconds. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogil?
Item three, IDB Executive Director Elaine Milton presented the attached payment in lieu of taxes pilot proposal for Copperwell. We had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached resolution consenting to the Industrial Development Board of the City of Fayetteville and Lincoln County, Tennessee, negotiating and accepting payments in lieu of ad valorem tax with respect to a certain project in Fayetteville, Tennessee, and finding that such payments are deemed to be in furtherance of the public purposes of the board as defined in Tennessee Code Annotated Section 7-53-305.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Sanders makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Jean seconds it. Commissioner Jean seconds it. Any questions on this item? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle?
Item four, Sheriff Murray Blackwelder presented the following. A. Sheriff Blackwelder informed the committee that he overlooked in his prior letter of agreement the position of executive administrative assistants. This position will be moved to a grade eight, step 10, at $24.83 per hour. This will become a salary position as all other administrative positions are salary at 84 hours bi-weekly. This change should take effect immediately. Had a motion by Commissioner Ewing, seconded by Commissioner Dangerfield, passed unanimously to approve the updated letter of agreement adding the overlooked position of executive administrator assistance. This position will be moved to a salary of 84 hours bi-weekly, grade eight, step 10, at $24.83 per hour. This change should take effect immediately.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Young makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Britt seconds it. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle?
I believe it's item 4B.
Yes, sir.
Request for a position to be assigned to the FBI/TVI Task Force in the amount of Had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Davis, passed unanimously to approve the FBI/TVI position at a cost of $59,077.55.
Okay, is that the end of that one? Okay.
We've got another motion on the next one.
Okay, all right. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Bradford makes a motion. Commissioner Reviss seconds. Any questions? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle?
Estimated cost of $16,000 for the position to replace the FBI Task Force position to be effective April 1st, 2021. Had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, passed unanimously to approve the replacement position and cost.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Hunter makes a motion. Commissioner Cunningham seconds. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle?
Item four C, due to a wreck that totaled a Tahoe in the sheriff's fleet of vehicles, the sheriff has requested a one-time cost of $19,500 for replacement vehicle and equipment. This $19,500 should be offset by the sale of two sheriff's vehicles to be sold on God's deals. We had a motion by Commissioner Ogle, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed unanimously to approve the replacement purchase of the Tahoe and equipment for $19,500, and insurance paid $31,550 for the coverage on the wrecked Tahoe.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Spray makes a motion. Commissioner Ewing seconds. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle?
Item five, Financial Management Recommendations. Upon recommendations of the Financial Management Committee, Mayor Newman informed the committee that Vicki Trenum be hired as interim finance director effective February 15th, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. Vicki Trenum will reevaluate and report by September 1st to the Financial Management Committee as to her desire to continue as finance director. If Vicki Trenum does not wish to continue as finance director, she will give the Financial Management Committee 90 days' notice to find a replacement and allow to return to her previous position. We had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed unanimously to approve the above Financial Management Committee recommendation.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Mitchell makes a motion. Commissioner Bryant seconds. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle?
Further discussion was held regarding the salary of interim finance director and reclassification of finance department employees. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed unanimously to approve effective February 15th, 2021, the salary of interim finance director at $86,218 and reclassification of the finance department employees from a grade 21 to a grade 34. One classified as solid waste director and one classified as deputy finance director. Both these positions will be exempt employees. Upon reevaluation, a determination will be made as to the continuous of this restructure of classification plan. We have another motion next.
Yeah, you want me to read it?
No, I can read it, but it's two different motions. Shouldn't we vote on one and then the other?
Oh, yeah. That's a reset. So that was one separate.
I'll read the next one, then we can do what you want to.
Okay, go ahead.
Had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, passed unanimously to approve the recommendation of the Financial Management Committee to allow the purchase of a tract of land at 5 Kelsel Mulberry Road on behalf of the Fire EMA Director Doug Campbell for $1.
My apologies. Okay. What's the will of the commission on the salaried at the finance director and the two employees changing grades in those positions as a deputy finance director and solid waste director? Commissioner Reviss makes a motion. Commissioner Britt seconds. Any questions? All those in favor of this approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Now, what's the will of the commission on purchase of the tract at Mulberry for a dollar? Commissioner Thorpe makes a motion. Commissioner Young seconds. Any questions on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle?
Item six, Finance Director Trenum presented the following items. A. 101 General Fund Budget Amendments. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Davis, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached 101 General Fund Budget Amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Holland makes a motion for approval. Seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle?
Six B, Sheriff Budget Amendment. Had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed unanimously recommend approval of the attached sheriff budget amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Ewing makes a motion. Commissioner Dangerfield seconds. Any questions on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle?
Item six C, Sheriff Surplus Vehicle. Had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Davis, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of the sheriff surplus vehicles to sell.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Hunter makes a motion. Commissioner Spray seconds. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle?
Item six D, 116 Solid Waste Fund Budget Amendment. Had a motion by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham, passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached 116 Solid Waste Budget Amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Cunningham makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Bryant seconds. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle?
Item six E, Fire EMA Surplus Equipment. We had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached Fire EMA surplus radios.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Bradford makes a motion. Commissioner Reviss seconds. Any questions on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle?
Item six F, Physical Year 2021 Estimated Beginning Fund Balances. We had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, passed unanimously to recommend approval of the physical year 2021 estimated beginning fund balances.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Reviss makes a motion. Commissioner Holland seconds. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle?
Item six G, 141 General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments. We had a motion by Commissioner Ogle, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached 141 General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendment.
Okay. Will of the commission on this item?
Will we approve?
Commissioner Ogle makes a motion to approve. Commissioner Hunter seconds. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle?
Item six H, 143 Central Cafeteria Fund Budget Amendment. Had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Davis, passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached 143 Central Cafeteria Fund Budget Amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Bradford makes a motion. Commissioner Dangerfield seconds. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle?
Item six I, Financials Are Attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Ogle, passed unanimously to acknowledge receipt of the attached financials.
Would entertain a motion, acknowledge and receive those. Commissioner Mitchell makes that motion, seconded by Commissioner Reviss. Any questions? All acknowledgement of receiving those, please say aye.
Aye.
Any who did not, no. Unanimously approved and acknowledged. Commissioner Ogle?
Item seven, There Being No Further Business To Be Presented. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, and passed to adjourn respectfully submitted to the March 2021 Regular Session of the County Legislative Body. Steve Graham Chairman, Donnie Ogle Secretary, Vicki Trenum Recording Secretary. That's all we have, Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you, Commissioner Ogle. Next item, Notary Publix, Madam Clerk.
Ariel Farmer by Commissioner Ogle, Douglas R. Cunningham by Commissioner Ewing, Barbara Pitts by Commissioner Bradford.
Any additions? Entertain a motion for approval of that list. Commissioner Reviss makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Britt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. New business, I have one item. You should have received on email today an agreement for services of the delinquent tax attorney, approving Ed Sims to represent us on collecting the delinquent tax on property. Anybody need it read? Motion to approve by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Dangerfield. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Any other new business items? Commissioner Dangerfield?
I would just like to say that Joe Webb, he used to drive an ambulance service. He lost his little son on the hard way back on Saturday, so great for the family.
Mr. Joe Webb, he's retired from our ambulance service, and he's, I don't know how many years he's served us, but he's served us